The City Award is the oldest community recognition program in the country. Canoga Park received the designation back in 2005. And over in El Cerrino, residents also paid their respects to veterans past and present with a special ceremony. Here's Rasha Goell.
The community of El Cerrino gathered to recognize veterans and fallen heroes. Councilmember Jose Huizar and the American Legion Alhambra Post #139 hold a Memorial Day tribute near Huntington Drive and Eastern Avenue.
Veterans from here in El Cerrino and our surrounding east side communities have had a long history of military service as we know. Many of you are here today. You served in WWII, the Korean War, Vietnam, and the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan and other battles throughout the world as you protected American interests.
For veteran David Lopez, being recognized is a humbling and important moment.
For many years, nobody had really recognized us veterans of Vietnam. And now all of a sudden, everybody's starting to honor us, and we're really proud about that.
Americans must, not need to, they must remember that freedom isn't free. It's there because people have given their lives, are willing to give their lives.
This tribute celebrating veterans is a small gesture of appreciation for the grand sacrifice they make. I'm Rasha Goell for LA This Week.
The event also honored George Cabrera Sr., a WWII veteran who served on 35 bombing runs over Germany. And some local Girl Scouts demonstrate there are other ways to pay tribute to our soldiers on a daily basis. As the saying goes, "The way to a person's heart is through their stomach."
U.S. servicemembers arriving at or departing from LAX skip the airport terminal waiting rooms in favor of the home-like environment at the Bob Hope USO facility at LAX. The mission of the USO, or United Services Organization, is to support the troops by providing services that help boost the morale of troops serving overseas.
Our Marines are deploying from here all over the world. We want to give them strength, we want to give them peace, and we want to bless them.
And on this day, servicemembers receive a surprise visit from some Girl Scouts from the greater Los Angeles area who came bearing gifts. Boxes upon boxes of Girl Scout cookies from Thin Mints to Dozy Doze to Samoans and more.
We're so lucky because we get to donate cookies to the military.
Our customers donating the money, the cookie boxes, so we pass them down in the line at the USO.
Soldiers worked shoulder to shoulder with the Girl Scouts to move the goodies into the USO.
Whenever we're overseas and we see Girl Scout cookies, it's like, it reminds us a lot of home, and it's like opening up a present on Christmas Eve.
Councilman Bill Rosendahl, himself a veteran, paid a visit to the USO. Speaking to a young Girl Scout, the councilmember thanked her Girl Scout troop for all that they do for our soldiers.
Thank you for what you're doing, for giving Girl Scout cookies. They're the greatest cookies around, and for being a Girl Scout and making a difference for all of us.
Making a difference in the hearts and stomachs of our soldiers, one box of Girl Scout cookies at a time. The USO operates at more than 160 locations in 27 states and 14 countries, and at hundreds of entertainment events each year. Turning to the issue of gun violence, fewer criminals will get their hands on guns, and more of them will now get caught if they use them in the commission of a crime. That's the plan as the state attorney general teams up with local leaders to beef up California's Armed and Prohibited Persons System. Anna Marcos explains.
It's an intimidating arsenal of weapons. Guns which authorities have recovered from people on California's Armed and Prohibited Persons System, or APPS, a list of those considered armed and too dangerous to carry guns.
They are individuals who we know have purchased a gun, but are also individuals who were convicted of a felony and thereby prohibited from owning or possessing a gun, or they have been found by a court to be mentally ill.
The APPS program just got a $24 million windfall from the state. And now Attorney General Kamala Harris and the state's DAs have banded together to beef up the program, enforce gun control laws, and hunt down those on the APPS list.
Currently, we have approximately 20,000 individuals who are on that list, and we need to make sure that we visit with them as soon as possible and take the guns out of their hands.
They have simply asked residents to voluntarily surrender guns illegally possessed or anywhere in the control of those persons who are prohibited, and they have been remarkably successful.
The LAPD has been instrumental in confiscating the guns.
To me, this is another tool that I can use to make LA safer.
Harris also announced a new micro stamping law now in the books. The law, written by former state Assembly Member and city attorney-elect Mike Fuhrer, requires all new semi-automatic guns in California to carry micro stamping technology.
When that takes place, before the shell casing and the bullet that houses, which is housed, leaves the barrel of the gun, there is a stamp, laser imprinted stamp that is placed on that shell casing. When the shell casing falls from the gun, as the bullet goes to its intended target, that shell casing has stamped within a code that states the make, model, and serial number of the gun that fired the bullet.
Authorities hope the new measures prevent new gun crimes, as well as help solve more of those that do occur in a state where 40% of homicides go unsolved. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
DAs in California's 58 counties are cooperating with the program. The LAPD can now boast a new graduating class, but these new officers are not only ready to report for duty, they're ready to do it for free. Here again is Anna Marcos.
Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me.
Twelve new officers are swearing in at the LAPD academy, but this is a special breed of rookies, volunteering their own time in the name of law and order. This is the latest graduating class of Reserve Officers. Ten of them will serve with the LAPD, and two will patrol the streets with the San Fernando Police Department.
I want to say thank you, and I also want to say thank you to these officers who have dedicated over the last five months 146 hours of volunteer service to go through the training course to become Reserve Officers.
Councilmember Richard Alarcon got to honor his own Chief of Staff Becca Doten, who's one of the new Reserve Officers. More than 650 Reserve Officers volunteer with the Los Angeles Police Reserve Corps, doing many of the same jobs done by full-time cops. They even receive much of the same training.
That is really the epitomizing of going above and beyond the line of duty. They do it for nothing, in LAPD, really nothing, not even enough to fill a gas tank anymore, but they do it out of the kindness of their heart, because they have the drive, they have the desire to serve their communities.
Class is now officially dismissed, and whether they're assigned to work patrol, air support, vice, or gangs, these Reserve Officers are now ready to walk the beat. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Two of the 12 new Reserve Officers are women. A new factory supplying life-saving plasma therapies has set up shop in the community of Lincoln Heights. As Gil Reyes reports, the plant aims to inject new blood into Southern California's biotech field.
A preview of production at the new Grifols Biotech Plant in Lincoln Heights. Soon, these vials will be filled with medicine to treat people like Marcia Boyle's son.
And my son and some of the others like him are healthy today and productive people because of access to plasma therapies.
The plant is expected to produce 16 million grams of Gamunex C each year. That's plasma protein therapy for people with primary immune deficiencies. The company Grifols is based in Barcelona, Spain, but opens its newest 95,000-square-foot plant not far from USC, UCLA, and other biotech facilities, hoping to inject new blood into a lucrative market.
And with this ribbon cutting, we're not just opening the doors of a lab, we're opening the doors to the future. This isn't just a ribbon cutting for a new biotech facility, this is a ribbon cutting for the future of Los Angeles.
Today is a great day for Grifols, but also for Los Angeles and Barcelona.
LA Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa says the plant is expected to support over 300 well-paying jobs, providing a shot in the arm to LA's economy. In Lincoln Heights, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Grifols invested $135 million to build the facility. The mayor's office assisted the company with moving through the permitting process. Well, it's a first for the city of Los Angeles and actually for the nation. There is now a plaza named in honor of a Central American hero that gives recognition to the contributions Central Americans have made to our city.
Los...
The ribbon has been cut on the new Plaza Morazan, short for Plaza Centroamericana Francisco Morazan, the nation's first Central American plaza. The plaza, located at the intersection of West 8th and Valencia Streets, recognizes the more than half million Central Americans living in Los Angeles.
It is one more effort to celebrate the metropolitan, international feel of this great city and all the contributions of Central Americans.
The plaza, which features a pocket park with benches and trees, is named in honor of Francisco Morazan, the first Central American president and visionary who fought to unify Central America during turbulent times after its independence from Spain. His bust is a focal point of the plaza.
Francisco Morazan probably is one of the leaders in the history of Central America most important. He born in Honduras, and he always fight for the Central American Union. He dead for that.
Los Angeles is home to the largest population of Central American immigrants outside of Central America. This plaza, Councilman Ed Reyes says, honors their culture and history.
It is now a place where our children can see the heroes of our motherlands. It's no longer just more George Washington, it's no longer just Abraham Lincoln. It's also Francisco Morazan, the Simón Bolívar, it's Millán Zapata, it's everyone that played a role in making our country great, our culture beautiful, but more importantly, pride in our families, pride in our parents, because of the hard work they have endured to make sure we have a great future in this great country.
A diverse population from all corners of Central America who call Los Angeles home now have a place that honors their motherland that's right in their backyards. The construction of the plaza is a joint effort of Councilmember Ed Reyes, the city's Department of Recreation and Parks, the Community Redevelopment Agency, and community groups. More progress is made on the 405 construction project. Councilman Reyes helps unveil a new traffic signal at a dangerous intersection, and the city celebrates the opening of yet another new park. These stories and more in City Beat. Another traffic lane has opened on the northbound 405 in west Los Angeles as part of a $1 billion-plus improvement project that will add carpool access through the Sepulveda Pass. The 1.7-mile lane stretches between the Santa Monica Freeway and Santa Monica Boulevard and will eventually be converted into a carpool lane, but for the time being, it is open to all motorists. Metro officials said the lane will likely be stretched another 1.4 miles to Woolshire Boulevard next month.
What we are doing is building up that additional carpool lane for 10 miles, which will give you a carpool lane all the way from Orange County to I-405 at the north. So this will be the longest carpool lane pretty much in the country.
The project began in 2009 and was to be completed this year, but construction is now expected to continue through mid-2014. Councilmember Ed Reyes recently joined the Los Angeles Department of Transportation and LAPD officers at Eagle Rock Boulevard and Avenue 31 in Glassell Park to celebrate a new signal light at what used to be a busy and oftentimes dangerous intersection. The new traffic light was prompted by the high volume of pedestrian and car traffic traveling down Eagle Rock Boulevard, a main artery linking northeast LA to downtown LA. The Department of Recreation and Parks, along with Councilmember Richard Alarcon and the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust, recently cut the ribbon on the 13th of 50 planned parks as part of the city's so-called 50 Parks Initiative to build parks in park poor neighborhoods. This 13th park, Fox and Laurel Park, is located at 14353 West Fox Street in San Fernando.
I've been seeing a lot of places like this open up around the communities, so I have options, you know, either to go to one park or to the other. But it's great for the community.
While a quarter of the 50 parks are under an acre in size, they include environmental features like drought-tolerant plants and smart irrigation. The Department of Recreation and Parks, along with Councilmember Paul Corretts, recently honored the youngest woman ever elected at the age of 22 to the Los Angeles City Council by renaming the Palms Rec Center the Rosalynn Wyman Rec Center. On July 1st, 2013, it will be exactly 60 years since Wyman's historic election to public office. Wyman, who was on hand for the renaming ceremony, was also instrumental in securing the financing for the acquisition and development of the rec center on Overland Avenue. Aside from building new parks, the city is also dedicated to refurbishing old parks. Anita Bennett takes us to the latest playground renovation done with the help of the LA Clippers.
These children are testing out the new basketball court at Lou Costello Recreation Center in Boyle Heights, and they're getting an assist from Blake Griffin of the LA Clippers, plus the team's dance squad. The Clippers Fit Program, the California Endowment, and Kia Motors teamed up with the city of Los Angeles to refurbish the playground.
Last season, we began the program with California Endowment to develop the Fit Campus Program. We've now grown the program to incorporate additional community programs like you see here today with this wonderful park refurbishment.
City Councilman Jose Huizar thanked the Clippers, and he reminded the crowd, without financial help from private companies, neighborhood projects like this wouldn't be possible.
Given the short amount of money that's coming from government these days, it's important to have the private sector's support and involvement.
We've built this, but we're depending on you to take care of the park, to use the park, and to leave it in great shape for the kids after you. So can you kids do that for us? Yes!
The kids clearly enjoyed the improvements, plus the chance to get up close with the Clippers and their dance team. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. The Clippers Fit Program is in the process of refurbishing two more city playgrounds. Well, here's an easy question: Who doesn't like a good pancake breakfast? On a recent Saturday, all of the city's fire stations were opened to the public. Some hosted a pancake breakfast, others a barbecue lunch. The goal: to strengthen ties between residents and their firefighters. From east to west, north to south, all 106 of the city's fire stations opened their doors to neighbors for an annual open house billed as Fire Service Recognition Day.
We see the fire trucks go by on a regular basis, and every time they have an open house, we love to come. My son loves the firehouse. The gentlemen here are just amazing.
Each fire station's open house took on the unique flavors of its surrounding community. Fire Station 63 in Venice held a pancake breakfast and wowed residents with the old fire pole slide demo.
Every year, we have a pancake breakfast to honor the firefighters who put themselves in harm's way.
This station in Westchester chose to hold a barbecue.
Today, we're doing a little fundraiser. We're barbecuing some Santa Maria barbecue, and proceeds are going to the West Texas Fire Department. They lost their firefighters there in the explosion in the fertilizer plant. The kids can also come through here and squirt some water, and we have a jump jump. We ran a jump jump for the day so the public can come here and jump in the back of the fire station.
The Westchester Fire Station also took the opportunity to educate residents on hands-on CPR.
You saved somebody's life. Very good.
Over in Watts at Fire Station 65, they held a classic car show and provided musical and dance entertainment.
The community comes out, actually used to be a captain at Fire Station 65, old Fire Station 65, and just to see how far things have come and involving the community is a great thing.
Whether it was a community concert, or a traditional pancake breakfast.
We get over 500 people for our annual pancake breakfast. What we do is we offer just an open house to the community, and we have an overwhelming response.
These open houses help strengthen the neighborly bond between residents and their firefighters. In this week's List of Things to Do, the city throws a big party, and you don't want to miss it. A family festival at the Getty, and one neighborhood council invites you to get involved. It's the ultimate LA block party. The city of Los Angeles and Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa cordially invite you to celebrate LA on Friday, June 7th, at Downtown's Grand Park, which stretches from the steps of City Hall on Spring Street all the way to Grand Avenue between First and Temple. It takes place from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. It's a free, family-friendly festival, complete with musical performances by Grammy-winning artists, many surprise guests, and a special appearance by President Bill Clinton. It's also a chance for the city to bid farewell to Mayor Villarrealosa and welcome Mayor-elect Eric Garcetti. Go to celebratelat2013.com for the event flyer. And on Saturday, June 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., the J. Paul Getty Museum is holding the Getty Family Festival. The museum's family festivals offer a day of celebration and discovery inspired by exhibitions at the Getty Center. This festival on June 8th will celebrate the gardens of the Renaissance. You and your family can create a garden of your very own, or fashion a floral wreath at one of the interactive workshops, or listen to tales of distant kingdoms with renowned storytellers. The Getty is located at 1200 Getty Center Drive. Go to getty.edu for details. The Westlake South Neighborhood Council is holding its first-ever community outreach event on Sunday, June 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The All-Day Community Party will be held at the Band Shell at MacArthur Park, located at 2230 West 6th Street. There will be music, family entertainment, food vendors, and informational booths. But mainly, the event is meant to encourage more residents to get involved in social and political solutions by participating in the neighborhood council. For more information on the outreach event, call Manuel Olmos at 626-419-1000. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. It's an all-out effort to get kids to connect with Mother Nature. The annual Hike for Health event in LA teamed up with the National Get to Know Program for a one-of-a-kind outdoor experience for some lucky middle school students. Anna Marcos takes a hike with the whole crew.
Robbie, the sanitation robot, is the first thing to greet students on this sunny day. About 300 5th graders are joining in the 8th Annual Hike for Health Event at Griffith Park.
It's nice, like the little plants and the little animals.
So you expect to see like rabbits, and some other little creatures like lizards.
Councilmember Tom Labonge and his office are kicking off the Hike for Health Event with the Department of Recreation and Parks to give students a new appetite for nature and for staying fit through hiking.
Now they have their feet on it. They've climbed that mountain. That's an inspirational thing to do, and my hope is they would come back with their families, with their brothers and sisters, to enjoy it.
They start at the Charlie Turner Trailhead near the Griffith Observatory, and they're hoofing it all the way up to the top of Mount Hollywood.
You get an entire 360 view of the city. You can see the valley on a nice clear day, you can see out to Catalina Island.
At the top, more outdoor treats with a Get to Know Program which introduces kids to the great outdoors. Some of the featured events include park ranger horses, a try at the park ranger fire hose, and one-on-one time with some of the Zoo Mobile's most cuddly creatures.
It got sort of cold up here, and like I got to put this, like there's this baby python, it was like super cute, it was awesome.
There's also a Get to Know Contest where kids get to express their experiences in nature through art, writing, photography, video, and music.
Any child in Los Angeles, greater Los Angeles area, 19 and under, is welcome to enter. It's all about getting out into nature and then sharing what you did with us.
The deadline for the Get to Know Contest is November 1st, but organizers remind potential nature lovers, there is no deadline for enjoying the great outdoors. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The Get to Know National Program aims to bring more than 10 million kids across the country into the great outdoors this year. For more information, visit get-two-know.org. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Renee, representing for Juventus from Vannais. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning. It is Friday, June 7th, and I want to welcome everyone to the beautiful Valley City Hall. Those of you on the... Give Valley, give yourselves a round of applause. We do have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, call the row.
Hello, I'm Buscaino, Englander Garcia, we are Correscoria, Labange Parks, Perry Race, Rosenthal, Zion West, and 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Buscaino moves correct seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Labange moves, Cracorian seconds.
Mr. President, there are requests from members to continue Items 2 to July 26 and 4 to June 14.
Without objection, that will be the order?
Items 1 through 3 are items for which public hearings have been held. Mr. President, committee reports for Items 2 and 3 have been submitted and distributed for council's consideration. However, a public hearing was not satisfied during the Housing Committee's consideration of Item 3.
Okay, specials members. Yes, Mr. Labange.
Item 4, is that a Transportation Committee report?
It's been continued.
It's been continued. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's vote on the items we can vote on. Mr. Clerk? Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next section.
Mr. President, Items 5 through 16 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us.
And, Mr. President, pardon me, for Items 5 through 7, no action is required. Those matters were previously reconsidered at Tuesday's council meeting and are no longer before council.
Okay, so we can just deem those unnecessary at this point, and we... there's no action required. So, cards on the... Cards on the remaining items?
Yes, sir, we have cards on 8, 9, 10, 11, 15, and 16. That leaves 12, 13, and 14, sir.
Okay, specials members. Specials members? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the items that are available to us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Mr. Labange.
Item number 12, forthwith.
Forthwith, at Mr. Labange's request. Next.
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, Items 17 and 18 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials members, 17 and 18? Seeing and hearing? Oh, 17, we want to receive and file. 17, and now we can vote on... There are no cards on 18?
Mr. President, there are cards. However, the public hearing for that matter was not satisfied in committee.
We satisfied the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cracorian.
I'd like to call number 18 special, please.
Okay, Mr. Cracorian calls it special. Anything left to vote on, Mr. Clerk?
That would be the receive and file for Item number 17, sir.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, what's the special meeting? How long of a discussion do anticipate on that item? Mr. Clerk?
In terms of the discussion, I'm not sure, sir. There is one item on the special agenda. Would you like to recess the regular and go into the special?
I understand. Give me one second. Okay, let's just deal with what we have that's before us at this point. So what is before this body?
Mr. President, that leaves presentations or items called special.
Okay, I'd like to call on our city attorney. We have a very special visitor with us today, an individual responsible for giving us Dion and all of the headaches that he brings. Come on.
I hope I don't have to speak.
Mr. City Attorney, who's our special guest?
This is my mom, Delia D.
Speak into the mic.
This is my mom, Delia O'Connell. She goes by Dee, or Mom, or Grandma.
Welcome, Dee. It's a pleasure for all of us to meet you.
We visited her childhood home in Boyle Heights yesterday, and she's on her way back home to Northridge after the meeting today.
Everybody, give her a round of applause.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I really didn't anticipate all this. Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here.
Mr. President?
Mr. Labange.
I want to know does your son call you every day?
You're not on the rows. Go ahead.
She takes the fifth, pleads the fifth.
He's a wonderful boy, but you're a lovely woman. God bless you, baby.
Thank you. He's a wonderful son, too. Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Labange, since you're already warmed up, are you ready to go with today's first presentation? Tom Labange, you have the floor.
I used to hurdle it, but I'm not. This is special. I just want to start off right now and ask all those people who are here for June Sale to stand up and be recognized by the city of Los Angeles. Look at this special. This is June Sale Day in the city of Los Angeles. Please relax and be seated. What a special day it is. This young lady is very special because she has cared about people all her life. Born in Los Angeles at White Memorial Hospital on the east side of Jewish immigrant parents long live Boyle Heights and all the work that is done over the years to remember that history of the Jewish people of Los Angeles who migrated. Where'd you go to high school?
Pasadena Junior College.
PCC, where Jackie Robinson went.
That's right.
And all of that, what great history this woman has had over the years. She's a wonderful mother of three, grandmother of two, and great-grandmother of four, and has been very active in child advocacy. And white right here is a giant of our city, and Carla Sanger, who is the mother of L.A.'s best. But the mother of L.A.'s best can't be with a real special mother of all good, of all good. And you're that special mother of all good as a child advocate. We want to honor you today for all your work, and a special want to recognize, too. Tomorrow, Mr. Rosenthal, will be the 70th anniversary of the marriage of Sam and June Sale. Give Sam a big hand right here. Back in the '60s, she became director of the Pacific Oaks College Community Family Daycare Project shortly after the Watts riots at that time, which is a great challenge for our city. Further on, she was recruited by UCLA. Give them a June and Eight clap right now, okay? For their special childcare program, Child Services, for over 13 years, she was the director there. She co-authored the Working Parents Handbook. And as we know, what is so important in our life, how working parents have now determined these generations how important it is. That's why, Dee, I called on your son to make sure he calls you every day, Dee. As I mentioned, even though we've got to remember our parents there, Mr. City Attorney, because there's nothing like our parents. But you've been a parent to so many, which is so inspirational, that you've done this as a life's work here, and we honor you today for that. And as this resolution reads on, "Her legacy has a broad and lasting positive effect on the lives of childrens and family." And we think that's the whole basis of everything in our community, childrens and family. This morning, I was at the grammar school, Charles S. Kim and Hancock Park School, two elementary schools, and there was nothing more exciting than to see all the children graduating and how they look like the future, and the future's going to be bright because of those children. But you've always done that, where you've empowered people to be the advocates for children, which is so necessary for us to be successful, long before it was popular, and making sure that we commit to that commitment. She was a founding board member. This is so important. Very important, two very important groups, boards, Stone Soup and L.A.'s Best. And at 89, she is still actively involved in many of those after-school programs. That's why Carla, I'm going to call you in a moment to say a few words, because you're so special, as you know. And as you know, from the way people have been benefited by L.A.'s Best and what goes on. Children, families, and caregivers have always at the forefront of June's thoughts and actions. She gives her never-ending support to her family and causes that she believes in. She is extremely a special person, and it's very fortunate for me, as a councilmember this time, that I, and on behalf of the mayor of the great city of Los Angeles, Mr. Antonio Berugosa, I got... Berugosa, I can only say that for another 22 days.
I know.
Okay, on behalf of the president of the city council, Mr. Weston, and all the members, salute you, June, with this commendation for all your work, and I want to congratulate you, know that people love you for what you've done.
Mr. Labange, I have members on the queue, beginning with Mr. Rosendahl.
I don't have to say much, because we know each other, and, and in fact, we were just chatting a few minutes ago, and I was able to give you that turkey egg and those hen eggs, basically to see what nutrition they'll give to your meals, since the scraps are now organic scraps, they're totally organic, but our connection is even closer. Your daughter worked for me, as you know, from the Palisades, and highly engaged, and the fact that you and your husband are celebrating 70 years together tells it all, what you've given us, so we congratulate you on that very much, and your caregiver and I, we're talking about some support systems, but you won out, and I love that, because you get your backup, and you get your strength, and that will keep you going, keep your husband going, keep your daughter going, and your children and grandchildren, so congratulations to you, congratulations to what you've done for all of us in society, God bless you, thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
What a wonderful presentation, and glad to see another person from the great Boyle Heights doing some great work, it's my home neighborhood, I grew up there, still live there, and there's so many great things have come out of Boyle Heights, and now we have June to say there's another great thing that's come out of Boyle Heights, but June, you, you've met, done so many great things, and to be one of the founding members of LA's Best is just an incredible thing, because there are thousands upon thousands of children who you have touched, may have not met them, don't know their names, but they have a better life because of the work you put into LA's Best, God bless you, congratulations.
Mr. Labange.
Just to say a word, the executive director of LA's Best, before June makes some comments, Carla, sneak in there.
I will sneak in here. Councilmember Weston, members of the city council, this lady, always courageous, always authentic, she has set the pace and maintained the challenge for 25 years for LA's Best, she is the go-to for all of the staff, she's a model mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and certainly leader for children's efforts in this city, she will never give up in her passion to be able to do what is in the best interests of children, she's kept us focused, she's kept us true to the values of LA's Best that Tom Bradley initiated in 1988, and I'm so grateful to all of you for recognizing what she's done, and I love her.
June Sale now, big hand.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Labange. Many thanks, and members of the city council, I know I only have two minutes, so I have written everything and I timed it, it's okay. Thank you for the honor you just bestowed, there are many others here for whom this honor should be made, but I do thank you for singling me out, I know that I've only two minutes, as I said, to say what is in my heart, I wish I had more, so that I could name all the people here who need to be honored as well. Here with me are my dear friends and family, all of whom have paved the way and worked together to make life for children in our community better. LA's Best and Stone Soup are two after-school programs that have changed and improved the lives of thousands of children. For 25 years, and 27 for Stone Soup, these programs have made it possible for each child to reach for the stars and made them realize that they can also make a difference for the children that will follow them. I am proud to be one of the many of their loyal supporters who have, who have watched, and I've watched these programs grow from infancy to now where they're amazing grownups. CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocates, had, has let me try to make a difference for children in the court system for the last 14 years. We are not always successful, but the accomplishments of my compadres are remarkable, these volunteers have been able to change the sometimes dismal lives of children in the court system, so that there is hope for a productive life ahead. I hope each of you on the city council will learn more about these programs and support them with your resources. Now that I'm 89, I feel younger than Masoodzul, and that is because I've been fortunate to be surrounded by so many people, young and old, who have been my family, my friends, my support, and who share their unconditional love with me. I want to say special thanks to my husband of 70 years for putting up with me, that's Sam. I want to also say, I also want to say many, many thanks to Lori for all the work she's done, to Carla Sanger and Francine Harkum, who have worked tirelessly on this, thank you so much.
Congratulations, June, this is wonderful.
Sam, come stand here, stand.
We got to go real quick.
Mr. Labange, if you could take it to the side.
I gotta, I gotta ask, I need all the light for the people's faces, real quick, boom, boom, 10 seconds.
Here, Bill, we got Bill in here, too. Stand over here, Bill, stand closer, I'll move out a little bit.
I've been supporting you for years.
Okay, Labange, we have work to do. Go to the side. Oh, I see, we have another special visitor in the house, we have a colleague-to-be in 22 days, give a hand to Bob Bloomingfield, he's over there in the red tie, and Bob, I hope you come and say howdy-do to all the members. Mr. Zai, if you could make your way to the podium?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, we have a very special ceremony that we're going to be doing, myself and my colleague, Mr. Rosendahl, to celebrate the United States Army Birthday. Friday, June 14th, marks the 238th birthday of the United States Army. 238 years ago, the United States Army was established to defend our great nation, from the Revolutionary War to the current operations taking place around the world, our soldiers remain army-strong with a deep commitment to our core values and beliefs. This 238th birthday commemorates America's Army, soldiers, families, and civilians, who are achieving a level of excellence that is truly army-strong. Being army-strong goes beyond physical endurance and mental preparedness, it encompasses the spirit, high ethical and moral values, not only desirable traits in a person, but in a nation that wishes to live up to the ideals and visions of its founders. It's interesting that out of 10 applicants to the United States Army, out of 10 applicants, three are admitted to the United States Army, three out of 10, that shows the high value and standards the United States Army has adopted, and people who wants to pursue education do it through the United States Army. Today, Army relies on volunteers to answer the call to service, just like it did in 1775, when a handful of men came forward to serve as our country's first soldiers. In 2008, I made a commitment to serve with the United States Army Los Angeles Community Advisory Board, along with my communications director, Jessica Tarman. The mission of the advisory board is to help the Army meet its recruiting mission in Southern California and keep the Army strong. America's Army, which includes soldiers, their families, army civilians, epitomizes what is best about America, their willingness to sacrifice, to build a better future for others, and to preserve our way of life, is the strength of our great nation. I'm extremely proud to be a strong supporter of the United States Army and military of the United States and its mission. Today, we are going to celebrate Army's Birthday, commemorating those who voluntarily stand in arm's way to put duty, honor, and country first. We need to continue to keep Army strong, so the Army can continue to keep our country strong, and I would like now to have my colleague, Bill Rosendahl, have some comments, and then we will be joined by Major Justin Babcock, the executive officer of LA Recruiting Battalion, who is here to do the official cake-cutting presentation and cake ceremony for our colleagues here in city council.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Congratulations, thanks for serving, right now, our great country throughout the world. I might say this, folks, having been in the military, every time I put on post-283's hat, I think of all the women and men in uniform throughout the nation and throughout the world, it is a day to celebrate our birthday as a great nation, and the strength of our military is why we're able to be here today. There are lots of issues that we have with the returnees, I met with a group yesterday at the VA property, and our new mayor is going to have a special office to deal with veterans and returning veterans, and how to deal with it going forward. I mentioned it to the soldiers there, they all applauded our new mayor with that leadership, so we look forward to Eric Garcetti setting up the liaison as part of the birthday present, really, the 238 years that we've been in military, and I just want to salute everybody, and God bless America, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill, and from, comments from you before we do the formal ceremony?
Yes, sir. Real quick, I just wanted to thank all of the council members for helping us celebrate 238 years of proud service, and, and really to honor the, the service members, past and present, from LA County.
All right, well done.
All right, so now we do the official ceremony, where we go forward, we have the saber, we have the birthday cake, 238th Army Birthday Presentation here in council, and as the saber strikes, the ceremony to cut the cake.
Hey, sir, I got to get me one of those.
So with that, Mr. President, we will have the cake distributed to the colleagues here in city council, we do have the official proclamation for the United States Army, again, congratulations, 238 wonderful years protecting our great land, America, and individuals who are interested in an army career, there are recruiting stations around Los Angeles region, we encourage them to follow through their commitment to this country, and as people graduating high school, and as I was driving to council this morning, I noticed they're having graduation ceremonies at Birmingham, many of the schools are graduating, they're seniors, and they wonder what they're going to do next, think about the United States Army, think about the educational opportunities with the United States Army, again, 238 years strong, and thank you for being here, because your presence here shows a commitment from the military to the people, and the people to the military, God bless you, and thank you very much.
Let's give them a round of applause, happy birthday to our Army!
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zai. Okay, what I'm going to do now is ask the clerk, we're going to take care of some business, we do have one more presentation, and we'll get to that in a few minutes, Mr. Clerk, what's the next item on the agenda?
Mr. President, that brings us to item eight, called special for cards.
Item eight was called special by John Walsh.
Got to give this a close-up, you can't do long shots here, this is our cake, we have a cake, too, every single member of the public will be giving you a cake today, this is our presentation to the mayor.
On the item, this is item eight, Mr. Walsh.
You'll get the two minutes later. Item...
Number eight.
Item number eight, this is concerning reap, reap is what happens when your landlord doesn't do his job, doesn't do his, fulfill a contract, the lease, and then the money goes to the city, so I have now spoken for 55 seconds, if you want some of this cake, come down right away, all you can eat cake.
On the item, on the item, okay. All righty, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now we'll go to item nine, Mr. Walsh, it's you again, on item nine.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, and item number nine concerns the city's fiscal management and the new enhanced maintenance service to provide off-site technical support services, we are 100% in favor of this, as we invite everyone to come down immediately, all of you can eat.
On the item, on the item.
Living, HollywoodHighlands.org, and that was 40 seconds.
Okay, let's, members, prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 10, called special for cards.
And I wonder whose card that might be, Mr. Walsh, on item 10.
Item, item 10, allowed to hold up anything you want under the Constitution, item 10 is the police commissioners, and incidentally, I know you officers can't eat on the job, but this cake will not be finished, we'll have some for you.
Stay on the item, Mr. Walsh.
Talking to the LAPD and RPD, this is the traffic division's off-road, it's a donation of a trailer, we're 100% in favor of the donation of a trailer to LAPD, that's one minute, HollywoodHighland, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Item 11, called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, item 11, Mr. Walsh passes, so on item 11, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Item 15, called special for cards, sir.
Fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, John Walsh, and is it Mike Somas, Somas, come forward, we're on item 15.
Mike Crehan with Somas, I'm the representative for the owner, and we're just... I'm the representative for the owner, and we're just asking you to approve it. I have any, I would be here for any questions if there's any opposition.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh? Okay, Mr. Walsh passes. Let's prepare to vote on this item, Madam Clerk. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Now, we'll go to 12. We missed 12. It's called special by John Walsh. Item 12. Mr. Walsh passes. Let's, on item 12, prepare to vote, members. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And, Mr. President, that will go forthwith for Councilmember Labange.
Okay, forthwith on that item. Okay, I think what I want to do now is take some general public comments, and then I'll get back to the other agenda items. So, if I could have, we'll do three right now. We'll do Rick, Rick Nightingale, John Walsh, and Candido used to, yeah, I see you. Candido, you're the cleanup hitter.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. This is for our councilman. I know you're not posting names, but Engler, he's my councilman. I live over here, just got on the board of Sherwood Forest. We have very nice homes in there, roughly a million dollars or more, something like that. And he didn't back us. He don't go to a meeting or nothing, and they're gonna put a retirement center home right on Parthenia Street. I think it's an outrage. We're sitting with all these homes, beautiful homes, and then they're gonna turn around and take a corner of two and a half acres and put up to a three-story building on this place to turn around and take... I just don't understand it, how this could happen, that we go to the meetings, we had, I don't know, 250, 300 people there, he don't show up, and turns around, and we find out it's already gone through all the hoops and so forth, through all the people and the money that they dished out illegally and that stuff to people that we have no control of. We should've had a vote on it, but this gentleman here does not even go to any meetings. I've called his office. He don't turn around and return a phone call. He don't accept it. He don't even show up for the meetings when it's at the San Fernando Valley. He wasn't here last time. He's not here this time. And, boy, I'll tell you, when it comes to the election, I'm gonna do everything in my power to get that person voted out, 'cause he's worthless. He's not for the community. Not one time does he take it. I have other friends in Chassworth and so forth that's had to have a meeting with this gentleman, and nothing has happened, and he don't answer any phone calls or otherwise. And even you councilmen even know it, 'cause I've talked to you about it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Next time, tell us how you really feel. Mr. Walsh?
We missed you, Rick. You gotta come more often. What is this cake about? Tonight, there's gonna be a gigantic orgy of self-congratulation at City Council. I mean, at City Hall at Grand Park. The mayor has invited Clinton. We have invited Monica Lewinsky. We'll see if we can get them together. This cake, we will be putting tonight, when we give it to the mayor, we will be putting a chili pepper in the middle to symbolize the mayor. This is the good riddance to Mayor Villarosa. People ask me what these brown, these are Oreo cookies. I won't say who the Oreo cookies represent on the City Council, but I think everybody in the black community knows who I'm talking about.
All right, now, wait a minute. Mr. City Attorney? Oh, no, take his time. Mr. Walsh, you, I don't mind you coming. I don't mind you coming, but you cannot sit up there and make statements like that. How could you be so cold and callous? You just showed, whoever's watching us on TV, how ignorant a smart man can be. Now, you finish your time, and you don't, and I got your Oreo.
Well, this proves he is listening. And I just want, anytime you want, I've taught in South Central for 25 years. Anytime you want a tour of South Central, the parts you don't go to, I'll take you down to South Central and show you parts of the city that you don't know. And if it weren't, you know what a student said to me when I got angry at him once? He said, "If it wasn't true, you wouldn't have got angry." That was a nine-year-old. He was correct. I'm telling you right now, we're having an enormous party. We're getting rid of, this is the good riddance to Antonio Party. We're finished with him. Good riddance to bad rubbish. Come here now, all the cake you can eat, and we'll finish it off all next week. HollywoodHighlands.org. You can keep your three seconds.
I'll pray for you, Mr. Candido.
My mother was the same way I am.
Look, you're disrupting the meeting now. You keep it up, and you're, in fact, Sergeant, he's disrupting the meeting. We might wanna show Mr. Walsh the door. So, Sergeants, go escort Mr. Walsh and tell him to take his cake with him. Candido?
Thank you, Mr. President. Would you hold my time until?
Let's hold Candido's time.
And for the record, Mr. Walsh, he is still disrupting the meeting.
Yes, he is.
By his epithets.
He won't be disrupting it long. And excuse me, members, it takes a lot, but that was, that was the edge, okay? Candido?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers, Candido Mayor's proud, proud resident of the 12th District. I want to thank you, Mr. President, for being here today, and I would especially want to thank the councilmen who are leaving office. And I want to start with Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes, I've known you a long time when you worked with another councilman, and the one thing I know is that you'll always do what's best for the entire city. You've represented your district, and you've always been very kind and open. I thank you for that. To Mr. Zine, there couldn't have been a better man to fill the 3rd District. Mr. Zine, you've always had an open-door policy, and for those of us from other parts of the city, you allowed us to work with you and to be successful. So, thank you, sir, from the bottom of my heart. You're a very wonderful gentleman. Mr. Richard Alakon. Mr. Alakon, you were a pioneer for the Latino in the San Fernando Valley, and I want to thank you, sir. A lot of people might criticize you, but I've seen the good in you. And even though you and I have fought over a couple of things, especially Delano Park when we wanted to name it after Sidney Miskowski, we fought over that, but that was, you know, but I thank you for your service, sir. For Ms. Jan Perry, Ms. Perry, you're not here, but you would've made a wonderful, wonderful mayor, and I know Mr. Garcetti's gonna do a great job, but I really appreciate you taking the time and running for mayor. Mr. Rosenthal, no one has a bigger heart than you, sir. God has a special place for you, 'cause we have a special place for you here. And I just want to thank you for always being kind and for always listening to people. A lot of times, people don't listen. And to Mr. Garcetti and to Mr. Michael Fuer and to you, Mr. President, I hope that we have what's called the Community Court Program. It's something that could be very, very successful if it's implemented. If we have your leadership, the new mayor and the city attorney, we can do some great things in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you. Since we're on a roll here, why don't we get Sharon Brewer, Glenn Bailey? Sharon, are you around? And where's Glenn? I don't see Mr. Bailey.
He's on his way.
Okay, well, then, I'll put his card at the back. And so, if I could get William, is it Kuzmer, Cuzmer?
Kuzmer.
Please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Sharon Brewer, public comment. I wanted to speak on May 7, 2013, Agenda Item Number 32, Council File 13-0476. It's the consideration of motion, Corretts, Garcetti, Kokorian relative to a lease agreement with the Armenian Cultural Foundation for the use of the city-owned surplus fire station 83 located at 5001 North Balboa Boulevard in Sino. And for a, at least a 50-year lease at a dollar a year. It says, "Community Impact Statement." None submitted. How could a Sino-neighbored council go in and submit a community impact statement when they didn't know anything about what was going on? All these meetings that I'm now finding out about were done behind closed doors between councilmembers Corretts, Garcetti, and Kokorian. Some of the supporting information about these dealings being done behind closed doors have to do with that after years of efforts and close cooperation with the community towards achieving this goal, Garcetti and Corretts co-presented motion seconded by Kokorian. Paul Corretts and his staff, who represent Sino, provided local foundational support identifying viable property suiting needs of a community center. Background work was culmination of nearly four years' process. Importantly, over two years ago, these efforts also attracted Councilman Garcetti, whose district includes a thriving ACF community center. May 17, Armenian, American Armenian communities of West Los Angeles and Hollywood held a fundraiser where they got $50,000 for the mayor-elect, and Garcetti stated that the Armenian community can make the difference in this race. They need to have a community meeting. This was behind...
William, thank you, Ms. Brewer.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's William Kuzman. I live in Old Granada Hills. I found out February 26 about an RFA district that's being proposed for our neighborhood as a part of the Granada Hills Community Plan, which the City Planning Commission has sent forward at their last meeting to this City Council for approval. I want to make a few points. The passage of the BMO was intended to eliminate the need for ICOs as stated in the report conclusion dated 6/28/08. To impose an RFA district for any neighborhood does not make common sense until the effectiveness of the BMO has been evaluated and established. Otherwise, the RFA district proposal is putting the cart before the horse. I have asked the Department of City Planning if they have completed the above CPC directions to provide an effectiveness report on the BMO within one year after its establishment. The DCP has not been able to give me any kind of indication that that effectiveness report has been done, and therefore, we don't know if the BMO has been effective in stopping out-of-scale buildings. The other problem I have is more than 90% of my neighbors who are in this old Granada Hills area are unaware of the RFA restrictions, and when made aware, 70% are against it, 2% undecided, and 28% are apathetic or need more information, of which they got none. More than 70% of the business owners in the old Granada Hills Business District are against the RFA proposal, because it means there will be no population growth for people to walk to their businesses, a main focus of the Granada Hills Community Plan. Seven seconds. There's a majority in the Beverly Grove RFA opposed, and that proposal's still going through their area without a BMO effectiveness.
Thank you.
As you know, there was a mere 1,000 votes recently passed in this city election. The reason for the low voter turnout happens to be the lack of confidence in the city. I will give you an example. Currently, there are 35 community plans that are going to be before you, which are being updated. Unfortunately, what occurs is that the city goes to the neighborhood council for outreach. The city charter for the neighborhood council does not require any outreach, therefore, they do not do any. As a result, the area for Granada Hills has a restriction beyond the mensionization ordinance for the rest of the city, encumbering them with a 45% decrease in their ability to build on their own property. This is going to be coming in front of the city council. It's also going to be, you're gonna hear a lot about it in the newspaper and on talk radio, because the media is gonna be directly involved. The EIR, Environmental Impact Report, is a draft. It is a draft from seven years ago, and on May 23 of this year, your City Planning Commissioner voted in favor of it without even a final being presented. In addition to which, the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America states there has to be due process in the taking of your property rights. There has been no due process, and the public file has been pilfered. There has been spoilation. We made an appointment before the Planning Commission met. I asked for documents. I have it recorded that those documents would be available to be photocopied, and they were pilfered. Now, when the entire public hears about this, let me tell you, you're not gonna have 100...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to item 16, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. Item 16 called "Special for Cards."
Well, the individual who held it special no longer is in our presence, so why don't we vote on this? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. Corretts, are you ready? Did Mr. Bailey arrive? Mr. Corretts for presentation.
Well, colleagues, I have to tell you, of all the presentations I've made in 25 years of being in elective office, this is personally the greatest thrill for me, because I get to make a presentation to my favorite musician and the founder of what I believe is the greatest rock and roll group of all time, Dave Davies, the founder and guitarist and vocalist and songwriter of The Kinks. Now, some of you will know them. Some of you will just know the songs, like "You Really Got Me" and "All Day and All the Night" and "Lola." Also, one of the greatest songs about Los Angeles, probably not as well-known, but one of the most poignant, called "Celluloid Heroes," about the lives and careers and speculation about them of the people that have stars on Hollywood Boulevard. Dave has played a number of times in Los Angeles. I've gone to his concerts and The Kinks concerts many times over the last 50 years. They founded, he founded the group in 1963, so that was 50 years ago. This is a rare concert that he's having in the greater L.A. area, actually in Agoura. I don't believe he's had a concert in this area in the last 10 years, so it's been quite a while. And it's my honor to have the council in the city of Los Angeles declare Dave Davies Day in the city of Los Angeles.
Woo!
Certificate?
That's great. I feel really overwhelmed, really. I didn't expect such an honor. Appreciate it. And Paul, and thank you to Paul for putting me forward for it. I really am quite overwhelmed. I don't know what to say, but thank you from the bottom of my heart. And, you know, I look forward to the show, and I look forward to meeting Paul at the gig, and I hope it goes well. What can I say? Thank you, and bless you all. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, we have a couple of speakers on the queue, starting with Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, Dave. It's so special to have you here. Paul, very special that you're able to catch, these are real people who were pioneers in rock and roll and who crossed the pond, you know, whether it was The Beatles or The Stones or The Kinks or Jerry and the Pacemakers. All of that had such an influence at the time, but they weren't manufactured like they are now. They weren't kind of put together by some talent agency. They got in bands, and they played at high schools, and they played in their neighborhoods, and then they got better enough to play in their county, and then the rest was history. So, Dave, it's so special to meet you, 'cause you're a pioneer... Oh, Joe knows them good. He's a Sam, because you're a San Pedro guy. So, that's good, because San Pedro guys know good rock and roll, so, which is good. But I just wanted to rise to thank you, and I just, one question. When you first got to Los Angeles, tell us what it was like as a young person playing rock and roll, because it was tremendous. There used to be teenage fairs, the Hollywood Palladium, all the old houses. I saw the, I saw the Byrds at Hollywood High for six bucks in 1966, it was. So-
I got here in '65, I think.
Uh-huh.
And I was only a kid, really.
Right.
16, something. And we played the Hollywood Bowl with the Byrds, I think.
Right.
And, ah, Jerry Lewis's son had a band.
Jerry and the Pacemakers, was that right?
Jerry Lewis.
I know, but-
I can't remember. But I was really impressed with, like, Hollywood Bowl and, like, all the 50s and 60s Americana about LA and all the, you know, I was very impressed.
Well, it's so special to have you. Paul, what a special honor to have a pioneer of rock and roll. And the Hollywood Bowl is now, season's going to start on the 22nd. Any Tuesday or Thursday, come hear the Philharmonic. I'm sure you like that music as well, and-
Oh, I love all kinds of music.
We'll get you onstage with the Philharmonic, and you can play that guitar again. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr.-
Mr., Mr. Buscaino.
Is this thing on?
You're, you're hot.
All right. "Oh, yeah, you really got me now. You got me so I can't sleep at night."
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Davies, thank you, and for all that you've done for the rock and roll industry. And Mr. Coretts was very humbled. When, when I first had a chance to meet Mr. Coretts, we, I just first got elected about a year and a half ago, we had a little karaoke gathering, and you would be proud, Mr. Davies, that it was Mr. Coretts who got up, the first song, and sang "Lola."
Woo!
And he rocked the house. You would have been proud. So, congratulations. We welcome you with open arms, and thank you for the years and what you've done for the rock and roll establishment. God bless you. Keep, keep playing.
Thank you.
Well, you're, you're a lucky man, Mr. Buscaino. I have never been at an event and witnessed Mr. Coretts rock the house. I wish I was there. Mr. Reyes?
I just want to rise and say thank you for sharing this time with us. You take us back to some glorious days. I believe when The Beatles came to Dodger Stadium, they had Cannibal and the Headhunters, and you had all these bands from the East Side who were flourishing at the time, that were different. But everything was different.
Yeah.
And it was great to have that type of nostalgia and for having you here in person. And thank you, Paul, because you're bringing back some great memories echoing through time, and it's a real honor to see you and have you here in the chamber with us. Thank you so much.
Bless you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Labange.
To close out, Paul, Buddy Holly started it all, and all the music before, and all the gospel music and all that. But just so you know, members, the name, you know where the name Crickets came from, Joe? Buddy Holly was in his garage in West Texas, and in the garage, in the walls, were crickets.
Yeah.
So, there you got Buddy Holly and the Crickets. In the garage, in the neighborhood. You talk about Cannibal and the Headhunters, all those guys from the East Side. This was great, how it all created. It's so, this is real history right here. I want to close with a little history, though. I want to ask Paul-
Please, Mr. Labange.
Paul Coretts, please sing what you did the other night there. Pico en sapo veda, pico en sapo veda, pico en sapo veda, labrea.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Coretts, I just had two other individuals come up to me that were there and witnessed, and I've been told you're excellent. So, I do genuinely look forward to listening to you. And with that said, sir, I return the program to you.
Well, actually, I don't know the answer to this, but maybe since Mr. Labange mentioned the founding of The Crickets, I wonder if you could tell us how The Kinks came up with their name?
It's funny, probably without people like Buddy Holly and Eddie Cochran, who was a big area of mine, and, and a lot of the great blues players of, like, Muddy Waters, Lead Belly. And we were sitting in our little house in Muswell Hill in North London, listening to all this great, great music coming from America. And Chuck Berry was probably one of the most important influences on The Kinks. So, when we were just 11, 12, 13 years old, copying these great musicians, and they were the pioneers, really, because without them, we would never have got into music, because they turned music on its head, really. And we could resonate with feelings of the blues and the oppression of the blues, being brought up in like a kind of, quite a modest, working-class environment. You'd tend to resonate with the blues and country singers like, like Hank Williams, what tremendous influence he was. So, it all came to source material mainly was English Celtic folk music, but more than that, the American players. Buddy Holly was incredible, and without them, there would have been no Kinks. So, it goes back way before The Kinks ever started. But we formed a school, and playing at school concerts, and, and so long ago, I can't remember the days, but, yeah, we have, we have, we had great influences from America. And I remember when we were having parties as kids, we had, we've got a big family, we've got six older sisters, and so we had influences like Fat Stomina, brilliant, Pericomo, Doris Day, I mean, right across the board, Frank Sinatra, the whole lot. So, we were very fortunate to have been able to absorb all these great musicians and singers. It all goes in there, and it regurgitates as something else. So, I thank you again for-
Well, thank you so much for joining us here, and any of you who have some time on June 9th, you have a chance to witness a performance by one of the greats of all time. So, come on down to Agoura and join me there.
Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you for coming, sir. I've got one last general public comment card, and I see Mr. Bailey. So, Mr. Bailey, if you could please come forward, and Paul, if you could slide this over to your right, please. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, President Wesson, for accommodating me. I appreciate it. My name is Glenn Bailey. I'm here as the president of the Encino Neighborhood Council. On an item that has been previously introduced to this council, it's a motion, Council File It was a motion to lease the old Encino Fire Station Number 83, located at 5001 Balboa Boulevard, to an organization for a dollar a year for 50 years. I want to report to this council that the Encino Neighborhood Council passed a motion at its last meeting, which reads, "The Encino Neighborhood Council disapproves of the manner, circumstances, and terms of the lease for the repurposing of the old fire station 83, and the lease to the Armenian Cultural Foundation. The Encino Neighborhood Council further recommends the city council consider other leasing opportunities and organizations for the repurposing of old fire station 83." And that passed. Let me just say that we had representatives of the Principal and the Parent Teacher Association of Encino Charter Elementary School, which is next abutting this property, and they described the public safety and traffic hazards that the children face daily at that school, and how that they had been making efforts during the past six months to try to utilize this property as a possible way to resolve some of those traffic and public safety issues. I will also tell you, over the last four years, the Department of Recreation and Parks came to the, to the neighborhood council and offered a proposal, which they said they'd have a public hearing on about, but to date, no public hearing has been held. We also had the fire department coming, saying that they might want to consider it for their fire suppression crews to work in the hillside areas. We've had other proposals. So, it's not right. The neighborhood council was never notified, the community was not notified, and we ask that, that we be notified.
Thank you for the public comment. Now, Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, we do, would you like to recess the regular meeting?
Recess the regular, close public comment.
Alarcon Buscaino, Inglewood, Garcetti, Weezer, Coretts, Kocorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenwald, Zion, Wesson, ten members present, and a quorum. Mr. President, the, the only item, item 19 on the special agenda, is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Correct. Let's call item 19 right now. Is item 19 is before us right now, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, as we've discussed, in the context of this coming year's budget, the Budget Stabilization Fund has played a critical role in our being able to prepare for the ups and downs, economic ups and downs of the future years, when we're facing the continuing deficit challenges that we have. This is the policy that will govern how the Budget Stabilization Fund going forward will be funded, and how, and under what circumstances it can be drawn upon. So, we've considered it at length. It's a good policy. Mr. Miller here is, is here to answer any questions that any members may have about the details of the policy, but Budget and Finance recommends an eye vote.
Very good. And also, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kocorian, I know our deputies, especially who work directly with the committee, have been briefed and all that, so we continue their work. There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, that would adjourn the special, and we will now return to the regular. That brings us to item 18, called "Special for Councilmember Kocorian."
Mr. Kocorian, item 18.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to call this special, because this council had extensive and lengthy debates over the future of the red light camera program in Los Angeles, and it was the conclusion of that debate that the red light cameras within the boundaries of the city of Los Angeles should be turned off, because, well, for many reasons that we don't need to debate again. But that was clearly the consensus of the council, and this legislation would apply to every other part of the state other than the city of Los Angeles, since we're not operating red light cameras now, and it would impose burdens on the drivers of California in the same way that we felt our residents were being burdened by the existence of the red light camera program. So, I just see no reason, in fact, I think it would be hypocritical if this council went on record in support of legislation that is inconsistent with the action that we took with regard to red light cameras here within our own jurisdiction. So, if we do take a position on AB 666, I would recommend that we take a position in opposition to it, rather than in support.
Very good. Speaker on the queue, Sergeant Dennis P. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Kocorian, you're on target with that, but the thing that the motorists in Los Angeles need to understand is the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, that is, the public safety agency for the orange line, the red line, the blue line, et cetera, they are still using those photo red light cameras. People are still being cited in the city of Los Angeles when they are in a transit corridor, and they go through that light, and then I get calls in my office, "I thought you disbanded the program." We did in the city of Los Angeles at the intersections, but it was not disbanded by the LA County Sheriff's Department that has a contract with Metro along the corridors. So, people need to understand, while we have disbanded it in the city of Los Angeles, it is still in operation in the city of Los Angeles and surrounding areas where the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department does enforce photo red light at the transit corridors. In addition to that, Beverly Hills, and Culver City, and Inglewood, and other jurisdictions, West Hollywood, they still have those in place. So, the city proper, they have been eliminated, they have been removed, but motorists need to be aware that they still exist along the transit corridors in other surrounding communities. There was a misconception to think that we disbanded it, everyone disbanded it, and that's not the case. That for clarification.
Mr. Rosenwald of the mighty 11th District.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I agree with both Mr. Zine and obviously Mr. Kocorian. It's kind of hypocritical for us to play out a situation that we've already clearly pointed out. But, you know, Culver City cuts through my district, so we know if you live in the 11th District and you go by Washington Place and Washington Boulevard, they do have the cameras and they do ticket us. So, you know you're in a separate town when you get on that piece of, of land, Washington Place and Washington Boulevard. So, I say to my constituents out there, be careful of Culver City and its red lights. It does exist, and they do ticket you. So, we don't do it in our city, but they do it in other places. Thank you.
Just a clarification before you close, Mr. Kocorian. Mr. Miller, just to explain this, so everyone, because I'm sure the audience of Channel 35, because there's multiple jurisdictions, as Mr. Zine so eloquently said, along the orange line, it is still by the sheriffs, et cetera. Mr. Miller?
Well, in essence, this bill would, would change photo red light to, to a citation, and it would also put the burden on, on the owner of the car to demonstrate that they were not driving. Part of the difficulty in enforcing red light cameras is it's difficult to identify whether, who was actually driving the car. So, it changed the burden. And, of course, Mr. Kocorian is correct, we don't do it within the city of Los Angeles, but it is done around us. This would, if people are using the law, it would make it easier to enforce and to administer.
And the orange line, which crosses the San Fernando Valley from Langisham all the way out to Topanga Canyon, is in the city of Los Angeles, but the county sheriff does do that in multiple jurisdiction intersections where it's part county-city or part other city, like West Hollywood, La Brea, and Santa Monica. Mr. Zine, please, followed by Mr. Alarcon, your button just came up. Do you want Mr. Zine first, or does-
The problem with this legislation is I borrow Mr. Kocorian's car, and I'm driving his car. That'll be the day.[1624.16][1624.16](Laughter). And I go through the red light at the photo. I get caught. You get the ticket, and then you're going to be compelled to say who was driving that car. The laws of our land, you're innocent until proven guilty. So, to utilize the, the logic that we have for parking tickets, whoever owns that car, doesn't matter who parks it, the registered owner's responsible. They're trying to do is turn this into the same thing. A parking ticket may be 60, 70, $100. These tickets are over $500. And if you don't know who's driving the car, which sometimes that happens, not that it's stolen, but you go valet, park, whatever the case may be, they're going to compel you to turn over this individual, and then they want to get that 500-plus dollars. So, I think this particular process is not along the line that we have, you're innocent until proven guilty. So, I think that examining this, to turn it in that same situation that we would have, you roll over on whoever was driving, whether you know or not, or you're going to be the one paying that. It goes on your record, because it affects your insurance, et cetera. So, I think that this legislation is going down the wrong angle, since we disbanded it, and now what they want to do is make it even tougher and collect more money, because what photo red light clearly did was collect a lot of money, and it wasn't really fair to the motoring public who made a slow right turn on a red light, which I don't think is worth a $500 citation. So, I think we use some logic and common sense. So, I was second to Mr. Kocorian on this particular matter, 666, which the state legislature's trying to, to pass, to say, we're not going to support that. We need to support against it and keep the way it is now.
Mr. Alarcon?
Yeah, we, it was my understanding that the reason we pulled back on our ordinance primarily was because the judges at the Superior Court would not recognize the evidence, I believe it was. They, no, it was that they didn't have a physical person witnessing the, the illegal act, and so they felt it could not be enforceable. So, does this law change that? Does it? How would the Superior Court view this differently?
I'm not the author of the bill. I mean, I have no idea what it would do, and we're voting to support something that, you know, we don't really know what it would do. We don't know where it is in the course of the legislation.
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
And we, and we have a situation where we've already taken a significant step in this policy area, based on a significant discussion and debate, and this seems to me to be inconsistent. So, Mr. President, my, my motion would be, just for clarity, I think my motion would be to just receive and file this for now, and if someone wants to bring it back with an, an actual analysis and- an, an actual analysis and a current status of the legislation, we can consider those sorts of impacts now. But I, I'm not the author of the bill and have no idea what its impacts would be on the burden of proof in, in court, other than what's stated in our agenda. So my, my recommendation would be to, to receive and file.
I second.
All right, good. Mr. Kocorian, Mr. Zine, for a third time.
Just for clarification for Mr. Alarcon, what it states is it would require the registered owner of the vehicle to pay for any citation issued as a result of violation captured by red light camera, regardless of any claims that they were not operating the vehicle, unless they can identify the person responsible for the violation. And would also reduce violation captured by red light to civil violation. So they want to take it into a civil, and you're going to pay for it, or you're going to say, who did it? Or whomever. But they're going to make you responsible, just as we do with, with parking tickets. Whoever parks that car is not important. Who the car is registered to is the one who's going to be charged and pay for that. So I think this is bad legislation. I don't think it's good for the public. I don't think it's fair. And I think that we should put this to rest and not support it.
And follow Mr. Kocorian and Mr. Alarcon's second, receive and file. So that is what is before us. Members, no other speakers on the queue. It's for receive and file. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. Next item.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements? A lot going on this weekend. Mr. Rosenthal, there's a big parade this weekend, is that correct?
That's right.
You want to make that announcement, Mr. Rosenthal?
Sure, why not. On Sunday is Gay Pride Day. And so if you're up to having a lot of fun and enjoying a whole group of American people, come to Gay Pride. It starts at 11:00 in the morning. It's over there in West Hollywood. It goes on all afternoon. The festival continues. It's a great opportunity to show your pride and show your love of gay people. We're all in this world together. Thank you very much.
Great diversity weekend. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Reyes, thank you.
Thank you, Council Presidents. I'd like to invite the folks in Northeast, everybody in the city, to a block party on Alice and Cypress and near the library. Art the Librarian and all the local community leaders will be there and celebrating. A lot of the work has been done in the past 12 years that the community has invested in. And I would love to see all of you out there. I also want to just take a moment to thank San Fernando Valley. This is my last meeting here. And I want to thank Candido for his words. More importantly, as Chair of Plum, 12 years ago, I actually brought Plum into the valley. We have Plum committee meetings here. And it was great to see the diversity, but also the, all the perspectives that are just so amazing. And in looking at, for example, in horse country with equestrian zones are located. The other day, one of the leaders told me, we have a charro now. And a charro is, it's a, it's a Mexican cowboy that essentially has a great tradition in how the horse and the rider engage. And they now have one in their organization. And I thought that was great, given the great history of Southern California. So it's, those types of actions, it shows me that we have a great future in this great city. It's because of the love and the heart that's here in the San Fernando Valley. So I want to just say thank you so much. It's been a real pleasure.
Thank you. The Cancer Awareness Relay for Life will take place this Saturday, June 8th, Cleveland High School, 8140 Van Alden. The ceremony starts at 9:00 AM. Public's invited against Cleveland High School, 8140 Van Alden. And public is encouraged to come out and support this wonderful cause, cancer awareness. I want to thank Walt and Nancy Sweeney, part of the coordinators of this from Revitalize Reseda. I will be there for that event. And also, as this will be our last meeting for those of us that are terming out of office, we have a memorabilia, the name that will continue to be someplace, but not here, the parting gift that we will keep. Candido, thank you for your kind words. Thank you for the people of San Fernando Valley. We did come to the valley.
Sergeant, that's city property. Make sure he doesn't take it.
Well, you know what? I'll make a theft report on it because Bill's going to take mine. I'm going to take his and Ed Reyes, et cetera. But it's been a pleasure serving for the last 12 years. And I'm glad that we were able to bring these meetings to the San Fernando Valley and to see our colleagues from all around the city come out and have the flavor of the San Fernando Valley. Mr. Alarcon is taking his. But to those of you that we've been able to serve, it's been an honor and a pleasure. And I know we still have a couple of weeks left in city council, but this is our final farewell to the San Fernando Valley for the council meeting. So thank you all very much for the honor and pleasure to serve.
Thank you very much, members over here. We got that. Any adjourning motions of Mr. Kocorian?
Announcement, sir. Announcement. Members, earlier today, we celebrated the birthday of the United States Army, remembering how America is Army-strong. I'd also like to note that today is the birthday of my policy director, Matt Hale. And Team Kocorian is Matt Hale Strong. So happy birthday, Matt.
Very good. Let's all rise for adjourning motions on this date. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I have two adjourning mention motions. If you could please join me in adjourning today's council meeting on behalf of these two individuals. The first is Dion Coluso. He is a member of the city family. He was born and raised in Los Angeles area and was only 34 years old when he passed away. He was a resident of Rosemead, a graduate of UCLA, and an employee in the Watershed Protection Division of the Bureau of Sanitation. Dion gave 13 years of service to the city, beginning as a lab tech intern at the Hyperion Watershed Treatment Plant. He became an environmental compliance inspector in 2002. He was a perfectionist, always striving to improve. His strong work ethic and integrity made him an excellent role model for new inspectors. He, his excellent work as a stormwater inspector allowed him to contribute daily to the cause he felt so strongly about, protecting our local beaches and the ocean. Dion was passionate about the environment, a dedicated volunteer at the Santa Monica Aquarium and Heal the Bay, from which he received the Super Healer of the Year Award for his volunteer work. Dion will be remembered for, by his coworkers as one of who dedicated his duties, intelligent, articulate, respected, and loved. They will remember his humor and the entertaining stories that he had for everyone. And he always had everyone laughing. The city and his friends and his family will miss him greatly. Colleagues, I also ask that we adjourn in memory of Hazel Young. Hazel Young is a longtime resident of the El Surino Community of Hillside Village and a faithful member of the city, of the City of Los Angeles family. She worked for the Department of Recreation and Parks for 35 years. Mrs. Young was not only an excellent civil servant, she was a dedicated community activist as well. She played a pioneer role in our city's annual Lotus Festival in, in Nico Park, which kicked off in 1972 to celebrate the Asian Pacific Islander culture and the lotus flower which blooms in our summer months. The festival has been on hiatus in the last couple of years, I believe, but it will be back. And it is, they will be in full bloom, full bloom in July of 2014. Mrs. Young was a dedicated wife and mother. She is survived by four children, Darlene Tanaka, Penelope Luna, Daryl Young, and Tim Young. She is preceded in death by her husband Warren and son Kerry Young, who was a dear childhood friend of my staffer, Rick Coca. And they all have fond memories of Mrs. Young. And she will be missed dearly by her family, the city family, and the residents of El Surino. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Buscayeno.
Thank you, Mr. Labon. Colleagues, today I'd like to adjourn in memory of William Cartwright, who passed away on June 1st. He was 92 years old. William was born on August 25th, 1920, in St. Louis, Missouri. Mr. Cartwright, as you all know, is best remembered as the winning, Emmy-winning filmmaker who saved the Simon Rodeo Watts Towers from demolition. William first laid eyes on the towers in 1959 and immediately knew how, how they needed to be preserved. With the help of Nicholas King, he purchased the towers and formed the nonprofit Committee for Simon Rodeo's Towers in Watts. They successfully fought City Hall and saved the towers. William Cartwright is survived by his son William Cartwright Jr., son Robert, brother Carol Cartwright, and three grandchildren. I had an opportunity to first meet him last year when we honored him for the anniversary of saving the Watts Towers. And that was a memory I'll forever treasure. William Cartwright, we thank you for your service and your vision to save this historic monument in the 15th Council District. May you forever rest in peace. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much. See, no further actions. Let's go on, serve the city well. This meeting's adjourned.